I didn't bring it with me.
I got it right here.
Hi Gary, you gonna?
You know, it's alright. Prioritizing our streets, that's where we're gonna be our first item on our, we're gonna get going on our work sessions. And the first bit of business is prioritizing our streets. You come up to the big table. Wait a minute Buck's coming, don't sit down, I heard him.
Sit over here, Donnie's not gonna be here.
Who's this one?
Randy's.
Randy will be here.
You can sit here, I know for sure Mooney is.
Yeah, Mr. Mooney, John's gonna be.
Right here.
Yeah, this is a better chair.
We're gonna make YouTube.
Hi, are you pretty good, you? Good to see you. We're just probably ready to get started. We are, but we started without you.
No, you couldn't have.
We did.
Alright.
He's the new guy.
What we wanna do is, we're gonna have to make a decision, this board's gonna have to make a decision, we've got about, I think $200,000 to spend on streets. And we're gonna try to get the best bang for our buck, and I know we can't fix everything for that, but we can, we can do some work this year, and we wanna do it and be ready, instead of waiting it to the end of the asphalt season, we wanna do it this summer when it's good and hot. Right Gary? So, that's why we thought we'd get it, get it in early and get it on the table. And we've got a bunch of information, I'm gonna let Mark take care of it.
City map, just in case you wanna make a reference to where these streets are. And Gary prepared a list of streets, based on their review, that are the highest priority in terms of needing attention. And would benefit from an overlay. You know, we've discussed, we don't really have funds, that $200,000 would get, you know, 150 feet of a concrete street with curbs and gutters done, so we're not gonna get much bang for our buck, if we look at removing and replacing the concrete. So, this is the list of streets, not necessarily in order of priority, but kind of in order of priority. I think there's three kinda considerations that we need to make. One is, the use of the street. Two is, the proportion of the money that's available, that a street will, will, will take, I mean, it'd be nice to do everything, but if you did the first item, you would use most of the $200,000 on that, maybe that's what you wanna do. Because, you know, it's a heavily traveled, high-profile street. And and then the third is, kind of, does it, some of these streets are dead ends. And, and, and so you could, they get kind of, the people who live on it would be the beneficiaries, that doesn't mean they aren't deserving. So you, you have to kinda establish your priorities, the only one I wanna kind of insist on is the last one. We did a, a waterline repair on this section of Sixth Street that runs dead ends behind the cemetery, and it was never repaired. And we've thrown gravel on it, from time to time over the years, and, and I think those citizens deserved to have their street repaired that we tore up. It's not just a question of it having deteriorated, it was construction work, and we just didn't get the repair done. Other than that, we can go through the list, and I thought maybe Gary would explain his perception of the problem, the problems here.
So you're talking $5,500 to do about $6,000, well, $5,500, I think that's, we need to do that.
He's saying, I, I recommended we do that last $5,600 item.
To complete that street right there. Where is this one, don't you have this paper right here?
Yeah, you got it in your somewhere.
It should be one of your papers.
It's in there.
It's titled.
Some of the stuff you just got.
It was laying on, on the table.
Yeah.
You already passed it.
No, it wasn't in the pass out.
Yeah.
It's in there.
Still here.
Yeah.
Here, here.
Okay.
Okay, we're talking about South Sixth Street.
Right.
215, 5590. And it's, it's been that way for a long time, and it should've been fixed, we never fixed it, so we need to fix that street. We good with that?
Just the part that dead ends.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
215.
I agree.
We all agree?
I think we all agree, that's, they should be one of them that we fix, that's.
There we go.
So when you say fix, are you gonna overlay or?
Overlay, yeah.
Right.
And, again, given the amount of traffic it gets, you know, you could do a two-inch overlay, and that would serve many years.
For a dead end, yeah.
Yeah. So this cost, by the way, is a four-inch overlay. So, at 26, at the bottom of the street, you got $26 a lineal foot for, for overlay, that's assuming four inches, so if you do two inches, it'll be even less than that $5,000.
Yeah.
Isn't there different grades of mix that they can put out also and stuff for different?
Yeah, you can, you can do a, and you usually do, you can do a first course.
The base, yeah.
Right.
Base mix, which is, and then you got larger aggregate in it, and then you come back with a C mix, and I guess one's an X and one's a C, or used to be that way, I don't know what it's called now.
At the bottom here, it's cool.
Not to interrupt, but right off the bat, Main Street, where does Special Road take over and?
At the city limits. There are, there, there are facilities on Main Street, but they don't have any responsibility for any of those roads.
So it's always the city limit? Or, okay, I just.
They're, they're, it's, it's a certain distance into the county beyond the city limits that is their.
Is their jurisdiction.
Can't remember, five miles?
Jerry, what is, on, we're talking about Main Street out there, you said there's a, you've been, you put a lot of asphalt in the section out there?
A lot of potholes that just suddenly opened up.
Yes.
The last thing that was done there, wasn't that oiled and chipped?
Yeah.
On the whole road, yeah.
Yeah.
The road's in terrible disrepair, it needs to be fixed, but the problem is, fix all of it, we're gonna spend all of our money, so.
Well, we can't go in with an overlay there either, because the sidewalk's already lower than the street in some places.
Yeah, what do we do about that?
They'll just have to mill.
You mill at the sidewalk. And you dig it down.
Okay.
Where is it lower?
Well, a lot of spots.
From the bridge to Ziegler, it's pretty much right. And then from there up, they started bringing it up.
So are we talking about changing what we do on that road, from our just proportion of it?
Well, yeah, I, I would think maybe, we got a lot of smaller numbers here, you know, we got 200,000 to work, maybe we, maybe we tackle that half of that this year, and, and maybe half next year, I, I don't know. Or, I'm, I'm still not out, I'm still, really would like to see us do a bond issue for $2 million to fix some streets, I think we need to look at that.
We're just talking about excess funds that we have.
Well, they're not excess, I mean, it's money that is collected for the purpose of road repair.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, you, the, the section from the park entrance to the ball field entrance is, you know, that part could probably be left out this year, and come back a year or two down the road, it's not as bad.
Right.
That's 887 feet.
So where, where are we talking at?
From the park entrance.
Okay.
To the top part of the entrance, to the, to the Yanks Field.
Okay.
Not a way to River View or?
No, that part down through there needs to.
Pretty bad.
From the ball field down.
I agree.
What do we know about the base on anything, Gary?
Well, you pretty much use your road that's there as the base.
Well, just, I know.
I mean, none of it's broke through where it's pumping mud up or anything, which just.
I've never even seen that in a hard rain down there on, on North Main, towards waters coming up through the road, it's, one good thing about that road, you got really good ditch line all the way along the railroad tracks.
So do they do like a leveling course, 'cause that thing's got some wave in it, it's gonna?
Yeah, they, they, they do that, yeah, wed, wedging. They, they come through, can knock off the high spots.
Yeah, okay.
And then when they get, as Joe's pointing out, when they get close to, like the sidewalk where it's the same, you know, then they'll, they'll mill down to create the depths for, for, for the asphalt.
Anyway, if you knock that 887 feet off there, then knock 23,000 off of that road.
Pretty good. I also wanna be mindful too, is where we spent our money last year, you know, we wanna spread the love around a little bit through the community too, I mean, we don't wanna just focus downtown, you know, we, we wanna focus on bad streets, but we got bad streets everywhere. You know, I was looking at, you know, out, when you guys know what's bad in your own districts, you know, we know what's bad downtown, we know what's bad. You know, Joe, we know out there, at the, off of Lynn out there, and all those streets, those are, those are serious issues going on that we can't fix with $200,000, but is there is one out there?
Well, that's the kind, well Autobahn is on here.
Yeah.
But that's the kind of thing that I, I was talking about, you know, yes, those streets could use improvement, but they essentially serve the people.
Right.
Who live on them and.
One thing we did out there was Lynn, was a pretty big project that we did all the way around that, that benefited a lot of folks out there. I can't remember what, we did LaFleur last year, which, it was one of those small roads, but it benefited, it got the water off the road, that was a problem, and I had to really fix that up. You know, was it Third Street down there, that was needing to be done, so. So I think we're doing, making good decisions, so we just gotta, what are we gonna do, where do we wanna go next? North Main is, it's a, it's a heavy traveled road, you not only travel, there's bicyclers on that road, cars on the road, going to the park.
I get calls all the time from citizens to say, you know, for many people, that's the first thing they see when they're coming to St. Genevieve, coming across the, the river.
Yeah. I'm not opposed to, I'm, I'm not opposed to spending most of our money on one, but I, I wanna, wanna make sure that you guys, it's.
A couple of things that, that, to keep in mind, this is based on last year's prices. Asphalt's lower now than it was last year, so.
I would think it'd be up, 'cause the oil prices are up.
It's may up. Well, it may be up now, the oil prices just went up.
Yeah, I know, so, well, that's good.
Well, I don't know what it'll be when we do the work, I mean, it's, it's very volatile.
How much more does the milling add to the cost? 'Cause there's pretty significant spots on Main Street, they're gonna have to be.
Right.
I, I can't give you a dollar figure, but it's certainly more expensive than not milling. But we did some, you know, Second Street, when we, I mean, it's, it's.
They mill, they mill quite a bit on Lynn Drive, too.
It's just part of what they do.
You know, another thought too, guys, is, is we can, you know, we could tackle that big project, and, and there's nothing saying that we can't dip into our capital, or, or, we got some money there, we don't wanna spend a lot of it, but or, we could spend some of it on, you know, to, to, to get another road in there, maybe we, we tackle that big project, and we do the Sixth Street, and then we kick in one of these other ones for 50, or, you know, you got Cedar Lane, you got Ridgeway, one of those streets, you know, and, and maybe get a couple of them, I don't, just thought.
What would that be then Gary, you said knock it off?
Well, yeah, if you knocked that 887 off of the north part of Main Street, that'd take it, that down to 132, 158.
So we won't, we'll do everything from the, from the bridge, from downtown out to River View?
No, to the ball field entrance.
That'd be great. I'd love to see that.
So the savings by not doing that extra part, will that, will that be enough to pay for the milling, do you think?
Oh, yeah, yeah, there's not that much.
I don't think, I think this price here is more than adequate.
Yeah, there's not that much to.
'Cause it's, it's based on work that had milling involved.
I would certainly be in favor of that, obviously.
How much, is that Gary?
Uh, 131, or 132, 158.
That puts us at 137, 748 total, right Gary?
What was that other number, 50?
So you get another $63,000 worth of work, I do.
You mean these numbers?
You have another $63,000.
137, 748.
So do we agree on the main, or?
So you got like $63,000, yeah.
What has you got, you, you agree on the Main Street?
I'd like to see it done.
Are we totally opposed to oiling and chipping?
That street, yes.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
That street is.
No, I meant just in general.
Well, I, I don't, I don't know much about oiling and chipping.
It's hard to do in, in town.
It's rough, yeah.
But the last couple of ones we've done, we've done at the end of the year, and it didn't have such a, a good cure time before, you know, if we did it in the middle of summer where it can cure quicker.
Chip and seal, we did in the middle of the summer.
Yeah.
Or I'm, I'm thinking of Missouri.
This is slurry seal you're talking about.
Okay.
No, chip and seal like we did the other side of Lynn Drive.
Gotcha.
I'd rather.
I'd rather not do.
You're fine, don't worry about it, sir.
It tracks so bad, you know, in the county, they could put it down, and it, and it knocks the rock off into the ditches, well here, you know, everything, we have, we have to pick everything up, and people track it in their houses and in businesses and.
Yep, they don't like, I don't think it's that good myself.
Well, it's a surface.
It's a band-aid.
It's a surface preservation technique, it's not intended to improve your failing areas. It's to keep the areas that are aging from failing, for a few years.
As we, we're doing this, if we're gonna do North Main, keep very in mind Division Street, going across the railroad tracks, there's a lot of traffic there, probably gonna be more traffic, as we talk about putting, doing something with the levee for people to get up there and, you know, walk, you know, so that's gonna be our point of us going in there, so.
You mean going past the brush site?
Yes, yeah, it's gonna be our only access to the, a good access to the levee, to, to do a, to put a parking lot, and to do some hiking biking trail on top of the levee.
So we're not gonna do the Market Street?
What you mean?
The Market Street access.
Market Street.
I think we're still gonna argue in favor of that over this.
You'll, we'll all be dead before that happens, this is realistically, we might be able to get that tapping in our lifetime.
Well, if Cor signs off on Market Street, you could spend our money doing that, subject to reimbursement at, at a later day, I mean, it's just a decision you'll have to make. I like the Market Street idea, 'cause you can conceivably create a loop.
Right.
But it would still have to improve Division Street to achieve that.
Well, we're, I'm just saying, in Division Street there, so. As we're, as we're overseeing these operations, we wanna do things right, so we don't have to go back and do it.
Well, I'd like to recommend that for Main Street, with Gary's recommendation, 1,000, 132,000, 158, that we go ahead and consider that.
Yeah, I agree.
So is that all we can?
At least it's 62,000.
Yes, 62,000, $252.
Yeah, on Main.
Less $6,000 for that one street we.
Nope, we took care of that last one.
You already got that in there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. So we're, now we got 62,000 to mess with?
Why don't we do just those two, and hold off after those projects are done, and revisit what to do next, in case there's any price overruns or whatever else?
I would rather do something and take some money out of the capital improvement to do that.
Well.
Yeah.
Even if it's gonna be a little bit.
I honestly think it's gonna be the other way around, I think it's gonna cost less than we're estimating. And then, and so that raises the question is, if you do end up with another $30,000, could, you wanna pick a contingent project?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, me and him talked about that.
You're gonna have to do something on Eighth Street, from the elementary school part of the way up there, 'cause there's places missing that are 15 feet square.
It really don't end, you know. It would have to go at least past Ninth Street.
Right, there's places up there bigger than this table where the overlay is gone.
That's not on here?
Yeah, Ridgeway.
Okay, gotcha.
And I got that broke down here, no, no, we did Ridgeway all the way through.
I, I think we, I think we do Ridgeway.
I think that's a good idea too.
That's another church, street that gets a bunch of traffic.
Oh, yeah.
I think that's really good idea.
I agree.
They got a lot of school traffic.
Right.
Oh, yeah, there's.
This maybe was yours.
Every once in a while I see a school bus go by there.
We do Ridgeway, we.
That's lost.
I'm sorry, Buck, if we do Ridgeway, we still have 13,344 left.
Really?
Yes, sir.
Wow.
We have to do Ridgeway all the way to the dead end?
I don't know how bad that, Gary knows how bad it is.
Yeah, hold on to that, because I'll be bringing a contract with Cochrane to you to do the design on Chadwell Lane. And we have $75,000 sitting in an account to do that work, but it might end up costing 88,000. So, maybe that 13,000 should be held in reserve.
Okay, and that's something we wanna get done this year.
Oh, I agree.
I mean, that, that's been talked about, that needs to happen this year. Wanna make sure that happens this year.
I agree.
Cause we're okay with, MoDOT is, is giving us the approval and the drawings for the, for the right-of-way, but we, now we gotta get it designed and then get it built.
Yep, so, are we in a design mode right now, or not?
We're going.
Well, I, I waited until we went through a competitive selection process for an engineer. And now that I have Cochrane selected, we're gonna give them this element of extra work on their, their existing contract rates.
Good, good.
That needs to be done.
I think it needs to be done. There you go, is that done?
That's it.
Are we done?
Are we, uh, are we matched out with Special Road at that 75,000?
You know, you have to talk to the, the Special Road District Commissioners.
I know at one point Mississippi Lime was willing to donate to Phil.
They still are, I understand, talking to Paul Arnold, remember we talked at one meeting we had?
They got some pushback when they did that work for us, you know.
Yeah.
From, from the county commissioner.
Now, that's supposed to be, uh.
I'm not, I'll talk, I'll, I'll talk to you later about it.
Are we supposed to have some land acquisition right there, from that, one of the lot owner right there?
Yes, that's part of the, but I can't go to him until I have it drawn, and then, he's, he's expressed his willingness to cooperate, but until you show him what is, you're asking from him, and so. Cause we gotta take that road which comes in at an odd angle now, and move it over, so it comes in at 90 degrees, and then build up the queuing area, so that you have a 2% grade that'll accommodate two or three vehicles at the intersection, and then start working the, the grade down to its existing elevation, which, you know, goes down.
What, what do you think that is now, 30%, 45?, not ain't 45.
No, it's not 45.
Probably 25 or?
Yeah, I'd say 20, 25.
Yeah, it's pretty bad, ain't it?
And, and that in itself is a problem, but God, when you're doing it, sitting there trying to get out on the highway.
Yeah.
You oughta track, track.
Yeah, can match it.
I took a bus out there once, once or twice, that ain't 45.
So it needs to be done, and then, and we can, we've got the money, we, we'll, we'll get it done.
We're gonna get it done.
Alright.
So what are we gonna do, are you, do you know what we're doing on the roads?
I got it.
You do, you sure?
If he doesn't, I do.
Thanks, man.
Ah.
It's good.
We're gonna do a portion of Main Street. Right?
We're doing Sixth Street.
Sixth Street for.
We're gonna do Sixth Street for sure. And.
This was from the park entrance.
Main Street.
Main Street. Or to Main and then Ridgeway.
Yes, sir.
From Yanks Field.
Good. So we're doing that.
And that actually spreads the work around into different.
I think it's good, I think it's.
We got that Chadwell Lane on there.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it's gotta get done this year too, we got to get it done.
To there, okay.
That's great.
Hey, we're done with that, well, that was easy. Gary, you okay now with that? Good?
You did good, Gary, appreciate it.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. This next topic, this, and this is, I just wanted to bring, I, I wanted to talk to you, 'cause I've had two meetings now that I've been involved in with, about the Parkwood extension. To the first, when was that first, it was a while back, I think I've talked to you guys about that, but we, they called another meeting with the parish, the commissioners, the community center, and there's, there's still, now, the funds aren't here to do it, and I don't know where they're gonna come from, but there's been a talk about extending Parkwood out to Progress Parkway, so.
I don't, I mean, everybody familiar with that project, that we didn't do? It, it requires land acquisition from the church.
Right.
The, this was in 2014, the finance committee at the church at the time agreed to pursue it with us. We had an appraisal done, it established the value at $10,000 per acre, and the Archdiocese Real Estate Manager signed off on it. So we were kinda ready to go, at the time, we were gonna acquire 20 acres, with, to put in a hiking biking trail, for which I had a grant. For reasons I can't explain, that didn't happen, and the, we had to return the money that we'd drawn down on the grant to the Department of Transportation, and we just abandoned the project. But I still have a, a basic design, it's not a total design, but the idea was, if we're gonna put in a hiking biking trail, and we expected to, to, to extend Parkwood at some point, 'cause it's on our, our, our transportation plan, our major transportation plan.
Have you guys seen that in the, the major transportation plan for the city?
That we, that we had to at least know what the elevation of Parkwood would be, so that we install the trail to match the, the future elevation of the road. And then, if the church was gonna sell us the right-of-way for the trail, we may as well ask them to go ahead and give us what we would need for the road, and then we would have the right-of-way, we'd have a trail, and at some point, we would find a way to finance, we'd, you know, the, maybe with the federal transportation grant, the road, but at least it would, we'd be ready to go. Also part of that project was drainage improvements on the, the ditch that comes through that, that field, because the, it, it runs pretty heavy in, in, in a rain, and, but the volunteers for the church have already cleaned up that ditch, and have put in some check dams, so that part of the work really wouldn't be something we would need to do. And it reduces then the amount of, of right-of-way we would need to acquire to six acres. So now you're looking at a $60,000 expenditure for right-of-way instead of a $200,000, assuming the church, with a new finance committee, uh, is desirous of continuing to cooperate with us. Again, I, it would be the acquisition of right-of-way, 'cause it's a $2 million road, and so, you know, that's gotta be financed by some other means. The county is kinda the one who's pushing it now, because of the water park and improved access to the community center, and all the same reasons that we were doing it ahead of time, it's just that the sense of urgency now has risen, and, and is kinda bringing it back to the top for discussion, because of their, because they're interested in it now, and they weren't interested in it before, so.
Well, it makes good sense to have another access that's not on one of the major roads.
Right.
I mean, right now, a kid who wants to go to the community centers, got to take the bicycle out on the state highway.
Yeah, state highway.
With no sidewalks.
That's a little 32, Arc Memorial.
So how close is it to this?
The other end of the, of Progress Parkway.
Well, it'll come, it'll come up into this, that, that'd benefit, that's why, if you, if we're looking at this, when we look at this, it's surely gonna benefit.
Oh, yeah.
It makes sense, it makes perfect sense.
But what's that distance from where Progress Parkway would come out to where this?
We don't know that, you gotta look at a lot of.
Couple thousand yards or?
Yeah.
Well, you're kind of at the bottom of the hill versus the top of the hill, so it's however, however far that is.
Well, you gotta stay on this side of that ditch, right, on the, on that, towards the community center, on that ditch. the community center, on that ditch.
The east side.
Yeah, the east side of that ditch.
No, the west side.
Yeah.
This is, this is parkwood. And this calls for the road to come in and intersect Progress Park Drive there.
Okay, now where, yeah, so the subdivision is right in...
Subdivision.
Right, right.
It's right here. So it's really not that far.
Not that far. Well, it'd be a nice connector, too, eventually. And then, for hiking and biking, everything. It's just gonna make access out to the community center for the city residents and for kids more accessible, too.
So do we, does the city own property then next to where that comes out? Is that still part of the?
No, the church owns all that property.
The church owns all that.
Church owns everything in there, so...
So you're taking, you figure out, make, I mean, if this would ever happen, you'd make it wide enough to where you'd have a lane for pedestrians and...
Well, I, I, we were planning on putting in a 10-foot wide...
Separate.
But next to it.
Yeah.
Or you do what you did on, on Progress Parkway, that, that trail.
Oh, yeah.
You know, five foot, you got a beautiful trail there, a five foot, that's what, is that, five foot wide on Progress Parkway when they built that? You know, so...
If you're doing hiking biking, you gotta have 10 feet. And, and you're doing, just a hiking trail is down to five.
Yeah.
I see.
So...
But the roadway would be similar to Progress Parkway.
Yeah. So, I, and it just, it's more or less vision planning, going, thinking about stuff like that. You know, as we do, and, and Joe, now last week you had some questions about this, doing that, you know, can we really do this out there? We, we were talking about, you know, that was laid out for industrial, now we're talking about residential. And there was some, and I don't, I wasn't, I wasn't here when that all got, that was all laid out. I know there was some, there was somebody that had some land there at one time that was gonna buy it to put some apartments on this side of the road, Burgess. So...
It's just, that, that's a zoning issue. And you, and you decide, you, the board, decide how property the city should be zoned. Although, to change the zoning is the process. And we go, have a hearing in front of planning and zoning. They'd make a recommendation and you would act on the change.
Okay.
But if you put apartments out there, those are residential apartments. I mean, it's...
Yeah, but it's commercial.
I know it's commercial, but it's still residential housing. Just combined.
But it changes, the category of use is consistent with the zoning.
How many acres is this property roughly?
Uh, oh, it's 700 square foot a lot and there's 38 lots.
So you're talking about that property, the whole property out there?
No, just this one.
Oh, yeah, I don't...
Ain't a whole lot.
And then how much property will we have left for commercial development?
Well...
You got the, now you gotta look at two. That's, we have property on the other side of the road, too.
Right.
This is the roughest property of the group. I mean, got that drainage ditch running through it. It's got sinkholes on it. I mean, it really isn't well-suited for a commercial or business use unless somebody, you know, tend to develop some pocket parks.
We don't want the houses going down in the sinkholes either, but...
And I'm no architect, but I know a really good one. And these are about the size of lots you'd find in Old Town Clayton Ladoo where the actual garage, or as they say, the garage, is actually under the building because there's not enough room. So, these are really tiny lots.
And to, to, to back up on that, that was the whole, we weren't around, we had the discussion when the IDC board came to us. And everybody was, they were trying to get these homes built from between 175,000 and 225,000 dollars. So, that had to happen to shrink the lot because if you're developing it, that lot's gotta be smaller, you know? So it's gonna be a smaller, a smaller home on there, so...
How many spark beet lots were these?
Seven hundred...
I thought they were 70.
It's 50 by 130.
What was it again? I'm sorry?
50 by 130. So it's 6800 square feet.
Some of them at the end are considerably larger.
Yeah.
Agreed. But there's some in there that I'm, okay. I just wanted to be aware of that, right?
Right, your setbacks now on the side are what, eight feet?
I thought so.
Well, this would have to be approved as a planned development.
Which, there's nothing to say they couldn't be...
It's gonna be, it's gonna deviate from any standard subdivision regulation in a number of respects. And we would have to grant variances for all of those things.
What's that subdivision you referred to up at Herkey? Were those 50-foot lots?
It appeared to be, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, those are decent homes.
That was all, and I, like I said, they were...
Southern Oaks or what's the name?
They, everybody was, they wanted more rooftops, affordable houses for starter families, you know, they can, that, that could be in that range. Now, whether that can happen or not, we don't know. So, this is just, but they asked us to, what we could do as a city, and we, well, this is what we come up with. Now, this is a long way from ever developing, you know?
So you know, you know, have a conversation with them?
Yes, yes. There has to be a developer come in and say, hey, we wanna build some homes and, you know, there's just a lot of...
Know a couple of those, too? It's about 11 acres.
Yeah.
11 to 12 acres. Now, the idea is, is we shop this. As we say, here's, here's something the, the city is willing to approve.
Thank you.
And see if there's a developer who wants to pursue it. We don't do it. We don't do land.
Yeah, we're not doing that.
But that's not saying those lots have to be 50 feet.
No.
They could be 55 feet.
Yes.
We're talking about a 34-foot wide house. And that would change the...
As long as it's in place. Right. You see where I'm coming from?
But you could, we could approve a zero lot line development.
Right.
And so you don't have to have any setbacks.
Okay.
All you gotta have is a separation between structures for fire...
Just change the variances.
Yeah, just...
That's what our lots are. They're made for heights. Rather than, let me 50-foot wide.
Well, you'll be, you'll be the first to know, all of yous will. I, you know, there's...
Well, I think the discussion today is, do you want me to start looking for somebody who might want to do this?
Yeah.
I mean, is this, is this the kind of development you want to see take place?
I don't think we have any other place to put it.
Well...
I don't think that we have, that we have that much industry knocking our door down, have you?
You know, and this is, again, this is not property, the property on the other side of the road is suited for business, not this.
But even if, even if that, if you look at that, is, that's the only place here lately that's shown growth. So, why not do something like, it's, it's beautiful out there. You, you have things for the kids. It's, it's really an ideal place for, for a home.
I gotta tell you, I'm not convinced that even with the small lots, the cost of infrastructure, road, water and sewer, and grading, and road, and, and the cost per square foot for new construction, I don't know if we can still get in that price point you're looking for.
We don't know.
I'm just not convinced that it's gonna happen.
Right.
But we never know until we try.
Well, that's probably why they got the bigger lots in the back that'll sell for more than'll offset the cost of the front.
Yeah, but I don't think you're gonna, you're not gonna, you're not gonna convince somebody to put a $300,000 house in the back of 175,000 homes. They need to go to Valley Springs. Because there's still 25,000 lots available over there. But can you develop a lot for 25,000 dollars?
I think, not including land, I mean, excluding land cost, yes. The withland cost. My idea was that we make this available, that, that a developer's interested in it, we enter into an agreement, allow him to build the subdivision. We don't get paid anything until he sells the house. And we cover up with a per lot release fee. And as he sells them, we...
Recoup some of them.
Get our, our, our patents and...
Marcus loves this kind of deal, don't you?
And we, and we release the lots kind of as, as they sell.
You know, being involved in building in another community for a long time.
We're not gonna do something illegal.
You know, with the IDC and stuff, and they talked about the 150,000 dollar square foot. We had just finished a home on a 22,000 lot. Everything included, material, labor. It was 1580 square foot home with a full basement. It was 148,000 dollars.
I mean, I...
But I'm telling you, it's gonna be a little bit of a culture shock here locally. People are not used to doing things like that. They're not used to some of that quality. But it does happen. And it happens every day. And two counties are joining us that I know of. You know, it's gonna have to be regulated. You know, the homes are gonna have to be controlled. They're gonna have to be watched that they're maintained, you know, because it can't end up being a, you know, 50% repossessed houses and, because some of those things follow with lower-cost homes.
Forgive me because I came in late.
Yes, sir.
But I, and this is just me, I'm not entirely convinced that there's really this crisis for housing. I see a lot of houses for sale. And I see a lot of ho, I mean, they're not new.
Right.
But I mean, I see a lot of houses for sale, and they seem to flip pretty, you know, rapidly. I think there's a lot of nice houses in town. I mean, I'm not saying we shouldn't do this. I'm having a hard time getting my head around it.
I said...
Because it's been presented to us as...
Before, that...
It's some sort of a crisis, and I, I don't see it.
I'm, yeah, I have a lot of faith in, 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 in the market. And, and I know there are people who are looking for ways to make money. And then, there was this, this great, this great demand for new, new home developments. I think the private entrepreneur would probably be doing it.
Thank you.
But it didn't cost us anything to find out.
And that's the redeeming quality of the whole thing, if we could do it where we're not spending our money.
No, I mean, we spent, the only dollar we, we spent was getting this drawing done.
Right, right. But I, I, I don't know. I don't, the notion that somehow that keeps people from taking a job here, I find it a little difficult. But that's one person's opinion versus mine, so...
Apparently enough people felt that way among the IDC and the chamber.
Yeah, that's who initiated this.
Yeah, I know.
There was this, there was this big cost variance, you know, and that's the big issue. And so, you know, there's a home, right now, one of the only new homes that I know of in St. Jean County that was built for sale, you know, and it's 290,000 dollars, 99,000 dollars or something like that. You know, not everybody can afford it. And I've seen all the costs in it and stuff and...
Is that the one at the golf course?
Yeah. And there's over 280,000 dollars costing that home, but...
It's a big house.
Let's add it.
It's a big house.
Well, what was he, what was they, what was he selling those villas for? They were 190,000, weren't they?
Pretty most of that.
Yeah.
They were 1500 square feet.
That's kind of why I'm, I don't know if this happens or not, but...
Does that mean like stipulations in place or anything? What's to keep somebody from coming in and saying, well, I want two lots and I'll just build a bigger home across those two?
Uh, well, we're gonna, we're gonna enter an agreement with a developer. Now, the developer may then choose to do it however the developer wants to do it. The model is that we're not gonna charge him upfront for the land. Now, however he wants to do it at whatever the agreed-upon price is for the 11 acres, I don't know. I'm, I'm, it's okay.
And we're not saying they're gonna be 50 by 130 foot lots either with 175,000.
We're saying that the Board of Alderman has considered it, and a plan like this is one that they are willing to support in, in an effort to get housing at this price point that the Chamber and the Industrial Development Corporation have asked. And we're, and we're cooperating.
We're cooperating is what we're doing. And we're not committing to anything.
And if somebody wants to take this 12 acres and put fewer, bigger lots on it, okay.
Okay, right. I support, I support the idea.
But do we have control over that then?
Yeah, we have, we have to sign a contract.
Yes, yes. They pitched there.
Yeah.
Business guy. I'm, I'm, I'm in supporting you going out and working.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have a problem. I just...
All right. Well, we need to wrap up our...
Except for them, we need to surveying or act for, for all the different lots.
Pardon me?
Except that a developer deals with...
Yeah, we're not doing...
They did for all the costs.
All of them.
We, we, we paid Go-Gro Engineering because they have a long history of familiarity with these properties. They've worked them up and down and over and around.
Yeah.
And he had everything on his computer already. And, you know, he, he charged 2,500 dollars to, to, to do, to do a layout. And that's what we got.
So what happened to the option that was on this already?
It expired. It was an 18-month option.
And what happened to that money then?
It's in the bank.
I mean, we were able to keep it?
Sure. It was an option fee.
There you go. I love it.
Well, it's just, it's, if we're thinking outside the box and want to get things moving, that's a good way. And rooftops and people buy houses and pay taxes, it's, it's gonna help us all the way around.
So then the, again, forgive me for I may have missed it, the, the water, the sewer, the infrastructure, the developer's gonna pay for that?
Yeah, it's all around the property. So, no, we don't have to extend anything.
Okay.
And so all you've got to do is connect and put it in.
I just don't want to see us get drawn into something that depletes our resources.
Yeah, no, we, we...
And Randy, uh, early on, we decided to, without you, to do some street work.
Okay.
So...
But this, is this in here?
Well, no.
No.
Here, Joe, Joe will fill you in. But we got about 15 minutes, and I want to spend the last bit of business talking about this new water tower.
I will be happy that you're gonna fix streets.
Okay.
Okay. So, uh, the mayor attended a meeting with MRV Bank, Steve, the engineer, the county, to discuss the proposal for the, the bank providing the funds to build the water tower, which we will then lease from them and, and, and pay it off. And so, after that meeting, I met with the county commissioner and Brad Arnold, who was also at the MRV Bank meeting. And we discussed some of the details. And, and then I, I, I thought I might have time to get it done and get Mark to review it and get the agreement on the agenda for tonight. But that didn't happen because my meeting that was gonna take place on Monday with the county commissioner didn't take place till Tuesday. And anyway, it's got, so there's an item on the agenda tonight that we, that, that somebody, Jimmy Jones probably, will make a, a motion to table because we're not ready yet to, to act on it. But I prepared, I did have time to prepare, and a bullet points of what the agreement has and a draft of the agreement, which, you know, I was surprised I got done. The, the, and, and Mark will have an opportunity to spend more time than tonight looking over the agreement and advising us on, on it. But the basic proposal is that the bank's going to advance up to a million dollars. Now, we really think we're gonna get it done for less than that, for, for the construction of a water tower, and lease it to us with a lease payment that is based on an amortization of the million dollars for 20 years at 3.95% for the first five years and 5.5% for, for, for the balance. Our, Cochran has already been approved to prepare the plans for the project. The county has said that, as, that they, they, they want to take responsibility for the site work, the, erasing for the contractor, for the piping, the foundation and the fencing, which I'm fine with. And so that won't be part of what we're bidding. It will be done according to Cochran's design. We will, we will be inspecting it. But the county thinks they can use their own resources to do some of the work and, and have other resources. So, as long as...
That's not part of the million-dollar loan.
Pardon?
That's not part of the million-dollar loan.
Yeah.
Yes.
Whoever does that work, I mean, well, if the county does it themselves, the county isn't gonna accept payment for it.
Right.
But if the county arranges for somebody else to do the work, which is more likely, then, then that contract will get paid out of the, out of the loan.
But there's certain work they think they can do, the county.
They can push dirt.
Yeah.
I, I have a question. We, or you've got more to say than I can wait.
No, go ahead.
Why the difference in interest rates for the city versus the county?
No, it's not what it is.
Oh.
The, the, the basis, though, the payment is based on the 3.95, uh, for the first five and a half years, and then it goes up to, to, to 5.5 for the, for the balance of the, of the lease period. Uh, and that's, that's how the lease payments will be calculated.
Okay.
And the county will be a cosigner on the lease.
Okay.
And they will make the lease payment-
All right.
Until through 2025.
Okay.
Uh, at that point, we will have paid off our certificates of participation for the capital improvements we've made over the last 10 years.
Right.
And we will have that cash flow then available to start making the payments. So the, the amount of money that the county will be paying for that, that period of time will be their contribution to the project.
And how much is that?
About $600,000. And I don't know exactly, 'cause I don't know how much the project's gonna cost-
Right.
Uh, until we get there, but if it's a million dollar project, they're gonna pay slightly more than they have.
For some reason, that $600,000 number just sounds good.
The, uh-
Anything sounds good.
But you know, if we get the, if we get the project in at, 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 at $900,000, everything gets adjusted accordingly.
Yeah, I was just curious why the difference in interest rates.
That's just the bank saying, I-
Yeah.
I don't wanna commit to a rate out for 20 years.
So they're-
I don't, I'm not gonna give you a 3.5% rate for 20 years.
So, okay, that makes a little sense. They're anticipating that prime will go up and that the going rate will-
Yeah, now-
And if you lock in-
If, if-
At, at, at that and it goes up-
You know, if rates don't go up and, and at some point, we can get, you know, we'll just pay it off and get the money somewhere else.
Right, okay.
And that'll, that'll have to be a condition of the, of the agreement we have with the bank, which we haven't seen yet, 'cause another attorney's doing that.
Yes. And then Mark will be looking at that. We're, we gotta be very mindful, it's, we're, seven years from now, none of us might be here. You know, we want this to be done right, that, that, there are predecessors that we leave this, we do this well and it's, it's taken care of and there's no confusion and no disruption.
Right.
And that, that'll happen.
Now, that point being, you know, who can predict seven years from now, is, uh, the, the city attorney, or the attorney for the county, uh, has asked that there be some, some collateral, for lack of a better term, that's really a fair, a bad term, but some, some insurance, uh, 'cause the county is going to be as committed to this lease as the city. And if the worst were happened, were to happen, and some future city board said, you know, "Well, it's 2026 and we don't wanna make that payment. We didn't like the idea and we're not gonna do it." Well, the county would have to continue to make the payments then. And the bank's not gonna let the county off the hook.
Right.
And so they're saying, "Okay, can, can we get some kind of insurance against that possibility?" And the idea is, my idea is, to give them a deed of trust on the undeveloped portion of the property on Progress Park Drive, uh, in, in an amount equal to what their contribution would be, uh, on, on the lease. So if, if the city defaulted on its agreement, they would have the property, be able to exercise their deed of trust and, and be made whole. Um, I, I don't, I mean, I can understand their attorney suggesting something like that and I, it gets reasonable, but that's just me. Um, and then they, and when they make their final payment, they would be obligated to release the deed of trust. Also written in the agreement, which you have there, but I, I didn't expect you to read it, Paul, is that we could substitute, uh, collateral. And so if somebody came in and said, "I wanna buy that property."
Yeah, that's my question.
And we, and we sell it for $700,000. You know, our obligation would be not to spend that $700,000 until the county's been, been made whole or the, or the, the lease period is over. So we would buy a CD and pledge it. I mean, we, 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 we could still dispose of the property, it's just that we have to keep an asset that guarantees their position.
Yeah. Why not just use that money to pay off the note?
Good.
Good. I think that our city attorney's got some questions.
Yeah, some of them are brownies.
Yeah.
And that, that's not fair to him, 'cause he's just getting this information. And we're not gonna rush it, we're gonna look at it. Like I said, we're gonna do things right and we're, we're gonna, this, we're gonna be happy and the county's gonna be happy. We want everybody to be on board that we're, for the future of the city and the county and this development, that things are done right.
So how big of a parcel of property are we gonna give the deed to?
Uh, I haven't decided, we haven't figured it out yet.
We don't know the cost.
The, uh-
It'd be 10, it'd, 20 acres.
Wouldn't it, wouldn't the deed of trust, wouldn't they want the deed of trust to be, to secure the city's payments through the rest of the lease purchase term? They're gonna wanna sign a, a deed of release when they're done paying. They're gonna wanna sign, sign a deed of release when we're done paying. Okay. That's what, that's what they want the protection from, is that we'll default.
Right.
So they're not gonna sign a deed of release when they're done paying, they're gonna sign a deed of release when we're done paying.
Well, once, when they're done paying, what are they, why would they, I mean, yes, when we're done, when we're done paying. Yeah, you're right, yeah.
Yeah, because they'll be done paying and then it's our obligation, they're gonna want some protection, make sure we keep paying. But I don't know why we won't give them a, some sort of interest in the water tower itself. Put a deed of trust to the water tower property.
'Cause we don't own the water tower. The bank's gonna take title for the water tower.
The lease isn't addressed.
What about the property under, underneath it?
It hadn't been addressed.
Yeah, I think, I think-
I imagine they're gonna want that too.
The, the bank will probably want a deed of trust on the, on the property or something. I mean-
Or they just want us to deed it to them.
I guess, I guess a lot of this depends on what the bank comes up with as far as the-
Yeah, Hues Camp is working on the bank, on the documents with the bank. So I haven't seen them, I don't know what's in them. These questions have, have to be addressed. My anticipation is, is that the bank will own, whether they have a deeded interest in it or some other, you know, ownership instrument, they'll own the tower and the ground under it and we're leasing it back from them. And, 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 and it's a lease purchase agreement. And at the, at the end of the, of the, of the lease period and making of the final payment, they convey it back to us.
Just like any tip of the law.
Yeah, I just don't know what the instrument's gonna look like.
Yeah, I mean, it's, 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 it's kinda play, it's, it's created, I guess, it's, it's, uh, so-
But it's doable.
It, it, it-
And you're gonna get it done.
It, it won't get done.
There you go. That's all. And it's gonna get done right.
Well, hopefully, yeah.
No, no, hopefully, we're gonna get it done. There's no, oh, that's, there's questions and oh, no, we hope, no.
So-
But is a lot of it's dependent on the, on the bank?
On the bank.
And what they're willing to do and what the county's willing to do.
The county and I have verbally agreed and everybody's on, 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 on board. Uh, we need to finalize this document for consideration at your next meeting. You should ask whatever questions come to mind. Mark will take some time to review it and then advise me as to what changes need to be made in order to, uh, to, to present it to you in, in its final form at our next meeting. Uh, he, he's with Alliance and, uh-
So basically, the county's asked for collateral.
Basically.
The water tower's worth a million dollars, why don't they collateral?
'Cause it's hard to sell a water tower.
Well, because they won't have an interest in the tower unless we give them an interest in the tower or the land or some of-
And the bank's gonna have the first position in that.
They'll, they'll have nothing but, um-
But I mean, if we're leasing it from them, they own it. They pay for it.
The bank owns the tower.
Right.
Not the county.
So the county's gonna be paying the, the payments under this idea for about seven years.
Right.
And so we'll be paying for a water tower they don't own. And then if, but they'll be obligated to pay for it if we default-
Yes.
After that seven years, if they're on the hook to pay the, the 20 years-
Their name's on the line.
Because both, both entities are gonna be promising the bank to pay that as part of the contract. We have an agreement with them as to how that payment is done. They start and they finish, so it makes sense, as Mark said, that they will want some sort of protection in the unlikely event a future, uh, a board of, of the city says, "Well, we don't need that water tower, we're just gonna pay it." Uh, and so we, we, we work out the details. I, I think everybody mentioned like concerns about tying up other land or something. If we can, we figure out a way they-
Yeah, other than interest in the tower.
But we have the guarantee that they won't default.
But we'll already have the tower, it'll be our tower. You know, I mean, the, the bank will own it, but it'll be the city's water system, so we have that asset, we have interest in it.
I think we'd be hard put to sell them water if they default on the deal and maybe that needs to be something that's in the document. You know, these lease purchase deals, uh, banks and, 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 they're done all the time and, 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 and I've often questioned it because what's a bank gonna do with a water tower? Well, the bank knows that the city isn't gonna default, because once, once you have the infrastructure, you need your water tower. You need your waste treatment plant, you need your water plant, and they, these deals are done all the time on that assumption, that the incentive is strong for the borrower not to default.
So what do you need from us on this?
Uh, what I've got. Questions that we've been able to answer?
So that was the-
Any further input? Now it's up to Mark to massage it and we'll get back to you at our next meeting.
And if they've got any questions?
Call me.
Uh, do we have time? Our board, can we take a two-minute break before the meeting?
Take a two-minute break.
Two-minute break. Joe's one five, but two's better.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, we have a little call.
Mayor Hassler.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Denny. Alderman Donovan.
Eric.
Alderman Jokers.
Eric.
Alderman Jones.
Here.
Alderman Stupi. Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Rozika.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Very good. We all had a chance to look at the agenda. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alrighty, we have a personal appearance, is Lonnie here?
Yeah, he's there.
Lonnie? Front and center, sir. This is Lonnie Hardisty from River Trails Group Stream Team Number 5628. Thank you for coming tonight.
Yes, I'm just seeking a...
You want to step over to the microphone?
Yeah. Okay.
There you go. I'm seeking a...
Letter of approval to put up a sign at our public access over at the marina. I just need to... Our MDC needs approval since it's not their property.
Now, technically, this is outside of our jurisdiction, but I, rather than just ignoring it, I really thought what they're doing is important work for the city and to give Lonnie an opportunity to come explain what the stream team is about, I think is really important. So would you kind of give them a little history?
Yeah, well, I've been doing it for 25 years, I believe now. Anyway, it's a volunteer organization and what we do is we clean up rivers. Individuals will volunteer and adopt a stream and we're the first ones to adopt the Mississippi, our section here, from the harbor up to the ferry. Anyway, I've also, they have a adopt and access where you can adopt a boat access and you get a MDC access or a public access and I can adopt a public access with permission to put a signage up. Any questions?
So, shake, knock your head and say, "Yes." Go.
Go for it.
Thank you.
Yeah, we already done a couple of them and next Friday on the 4th, we're doing one with the Valley Catholic for some of their students, so we're going, keep at it.
About that day that we had to clean up down.
Yeah, we had 20 people there.
Mm-hmm.
It was a pretty big turnout. I know the mayor was there and we were there and...
They roll off dumpster with...
Yeah, we have quite a few volunteers, a lot of things were donated. Dumpster, McDonald's brought coffee, hot dogs and water from Rosers, country mart. It was a pretty good turnout, especially for a nice cold day.
Yeah. Also, Lux Break when we were done, it was incredible. I couldn't believe it. When you got on the ground and looked at the mess, I mean, when you got into the weeds, there was stuff everywhere and it was just, it was incredible.
Yeah, it was 18 tires, five or six TVs, couches, lots and lots of just trash and some of that stuff.
Yeah, Sandra was there too.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's good stuff.
So is this outside your jurisdiction or...
The sign won't be in the city limits.
Okay.
So it won't be subject to our regulations.
Okay.
But even if it were inside the city limits, I think the board is giving you their blessing.
Okay, so I can get a letter or...
I'll write to them. You're authorizing me to write a letter?
Yeah.
Yes.
Just the fanag contact information.
Sure, I do that.
I do.
Can you have it? Okay, I'll get it from Alderman.
Alright. Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lonnie.
Takes us to the city administrator's report.
Okay, well, we already discussed the MRV bank business, so we don't... I will be doing future heritage commission work until I find a suitable replacement for Carla, so that'll be more interesting. Yes. I'm reluctant to start on that and then hire somebody who comes in in the middle of it and wasn't there at the beginning of it and now has to deal with, I mean, we'll proceed and if I don't find somebody in a reasonable period of time, we will go ahead with it, but for the time being, I'd really like to have whoever's coming in be part of the initiation of that process because it's going to be difficult.
It makes sense.
We're in the middle of some things right now.
Oh, no, I'm going, I'm going to do everything. Heritage, planning and zoning, nuisance, I mean, we'll be doing weeds and everything, but that welding maintenance code enforcement that we're going to do, I'm going to hold off on that.
Yeah, no, I think that's prudent.
Yeah. That's good. Alright, thank you, sir.
We were in the process of buying a moor, which is under $5,000, so it doesn't require your approval. We got pricing through National Joint Powers Alliance. We joined a purchasing cooperative before. It's Houston Gallaston Cooperative. They required an ordinance of the board in order to become a member of their organization in BAF from this cooperative. National Joint Powers Alliance does not require that, but they do the same thing. They bid from manufacturers on a competitive basis for municipal equipment, then the municipality can buy from them and they've already satisfied the obligation for competitive bidding and you get the benefit of their price, which is generally lower than we're going to get just shopping around locally. So we went ahead and there's no fee involved, there's no continuing obligation, there's really nothing for the board to act on, but I just wanted to let you know that it happened and that you're going to be seeing a new moor out there and in case you wondered where it came from because you didn't see the purchase order or approve the purchase, it's because it's under $5,000 and not subject to the board approval, but I'm committed to keeping you informed. The park board meeting, there's going to be a grand opening of the dog park on May the 5th from 10 to noon. It's not going to be a grand gala affair, but it's going to be something that the park board's doing of their own initiative and using their own resources and their own volunteers and people that they can recruit and so I'm encouraged by that. Gary sat in on a park board meeting for the first time, the mayor was there, he's the Aldermetic liaison. The amount of energy in that meeting exceeded just about any park board meeting I've been to in the seven years I've been going to. I'm not sure, as Lawrence Smothers, one of the commissioners said, "We talk a lot, who's going to do what?" And the new chair of the board is John Conard, he's with Mississippi Line and, you know, he's used to having meetings where you leave with an agenda and so it was good to see. I think it's, some things are going to happen here. I've been mentioning to you from time to time, this Volkswagen settlement, remember Volkswagen did their commissions cheating and the state got $41 million? As it turns out, 15% of that $41 million is being held back for urban, not, for rural areas, non-urban areas to apply. So we will have the opportunity to apply, should we choose, for funding. It's all about reducing diesel emissions, so whatever you do has to be replacing something that's currently polluting with something that's less polluting. We have a dump truck, we'll meet that test and so it's my expectation that when this grant application comes out, we will be submitting for replacement of a dump truck. Not saying we're going to get it, but we're going to compete. Then the 50% of it is open, is not reserved, but open to competition. The balance, the 35% is going to St. Louis and Kansas City, 25% to St. Louis and 10% to Kansas City. I've been going to the Transportation Advisory Council meetings, they're held quarterly at CMO Regional Planning and the MODOT personnel from the Southeast District come and it's an opportunity for everybody to bring up things and, you know, whatever we have with MODOT, that doesn't mean you can't call them when you have an immediate need, but the planning manager is there and people you don't normally see is there. This group has been operating without any kind of bylaws or anything. It's a subcommittee of the Regional Planning Commission, so they drafted this set of bylaws that, without them, there are conceivably 50 units of county or city governments who are at the table and that's unmanageable. So this bylaws is going to create an executive board. Every mayor will have a seat at the table, every county commissioner and, but every county, no, I forget exactly how it goes, it's being restructured. So the mayor will probably have the seat and he'll either go or delegate me because that allows him to delegate, but it's kind of bringing structure to something that wasn't very well structured before and the reason it's important to us, we don't get much state money for our roads because we don't, of course, it goes to counties. But we are eligible for bridge replacement funds if our bridges get to a condition where they need, and we get these transportation alternative grants from time to time, like we've done with sidewalks and I'll be applying again this year for a grant because it's a two-year cycle, so it's important to have a seat at the table and help, you know, set the priorities because we stand to benefit from it, so we'll continue to participate. Yes, sir.
This Volkswagen situation, does that only apply to licensed vehicles that are diesel?
No, a generator would qualify.
Backhoe?
Yeah. The city has a tugboat.
So whatever we need necessary.
No, no new construction, no new purchases.
Right.
Because the idea is to reduce existing diesel emissions.
Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Eric, you come up first, Sandra's on the phone right now, she had a call.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, chief.
I don't have much to report on staffing, we did lose a couple of officers or in the process of losing the second one, one was not retained from his probationary status and the other has acquired employment elsewhere, so we do have applications in and we are accepting applications, so if anybody knows any qualified, state certified people or anybody that, military police that can test out on the post, we're certainly willing to entertain those. I mentioned in here, we went to, the mayor attended also the Narcan Awareness or the Narcan Heroin Awareness Meeting yesterday at the community center, it was a good meeting, you know, pretty informative. I have some resources for some model policy that I want to get to Mark and look through some of that, talked to Sander Capital a little bit about their grant process for acquiring the Narcan. Sander Bell, what did I say?
Cabot.
Cabot. Well, I talked to Sander Cabot back here. Yeah, yeah, too many Sanders, sorry. Sander Bell, thank you for catching that, about some of the grant processes for getting those for the police department, so hopefully, you know, pretty soon we'll come to an agreement on that and get everything lined out. Does anybody have anything specific that they have any questions about?
I have, it's sort of directed, Mark, where do we stand on the remodeling process?
We're going to price out remodeling based on our own...
Right.
...efforts of this section and I think Eric's in the process of working on that.
As I forgot with Gary a couple of weeks ago about getting some measurements for this portion, which was not included in our original...
I see.
...proposal.
Okay.
And hope to present that to the board as a total project in the next, hopefully the next meeting.
Good deal.
Thank you for following up on it.
Yeah. Want to see if you got it.
Yes, sir.
Some of the surrounding areas have passed some propositions and this directly affects police salaries and funding.
Correct.
When's that going to pull all our good people away?
Pretty quickly. We've been talking, I believe with some of the aldermen, about some planning for maybe gearing up for something similar to that. I know Jefferson County passed one, St. Louis City or St. Louis County passed one. Those guys are going to be starting in the 50s and up. Petosi just passed one that will surpass us considerably. So, you know, now especially, you know, being two officers down, you know, we're feeling some of that pinch of the applicants that were already kind of sparse to begin with. You know, I would anticipate going to nearly nil, so, you know, it's something that we're certainly looking to research and hopefully present some plan pretty quickly to possibly look at something here.
So how do we go about that? Because I feel we're going to be in a world of hurt shortly.
We have to put together a proposition and get it on a ballot.
The deadline's probably May...
End of May, May 20, 20 minutes until I think.
I would recommend a couple with safety issue rather than be specific to one position, group of positions. It's just an attitude.
So can you explain the process and the costs and who pays?
Well, you draft the ballot language and pay the attorney to make sure it's consistent with the state statute and then you submit it to the county collection official, county clerk in this case, and then she puts it on a ballot and depending on whether it's a municipal election or a general election, you either pay for the cost or you don't. In our case, it would be in a, at an election where we would have to pay the cost and it's generally...
Thirty-four thousand, maybe?
Three, pardon me, three or four.
Probably. That's a guesstimate.
Okay, well, that's just the process to get it on the ballot and so the cost that we're going to increase salaries, you know, who pays it?
Well, the citizens are approving a tax increase dedicated to the public.
To the public. It can't be used on roads, it can't be used for tourism and it goes to the public.
Would we do this on a city level and not include the county? Because if the county were to come through with something also...
They'd have to do it on their own.
Does anybody have any recollection of what the law enforcement sales tax that they passed several years ago been killed? I don't know if we received any of that.
The law enforcement sales tax? No.
It was at the county level.
Was that a set sales tax?
But I don't know if that was specific for the sheriff's department, I don't know if we received it.
Strictly county.
Strictly county.
I don't think that is county.
Is that for the jail?
You took your tax one.
No.
It was just county.
Then you had to build the kennel, some of those things.
Oh, yeah, right, right.
Projects that they had, I just didn't...
Some of the nice new vehicles.
Shouldn't push some of that to the city, just like the transportation sales tax, yes?
Well, we need to have a work session about this or...
We've got some numbers together as far as what we would anticipate needing, as far as that goes.
I mean, we could sit here and lie and talk about this, do we need to have a work session?
That would probably be the most appropriate.
That'd be a good idea. Alright, so let's plan the next meeting. Joey has something to say?
Quick question, he brought it up, like the transportation sales tax, we get a portion of that, it's on the county level, but we get a portion of it. Should we be getting a portion of that law enforcement tax as well?
There's no requirement for the county chair and the general members. They agreed to do it as an effort, in an effort to get the tax passed because if they hadn't pledged some portion of it to the city, it's likely the city voters would vote against it.
Gotcha.
But in statutory, it's just what the county and the city worked out when they put that on the ballot.
So what do we get?
Twenty-three and a half percent.
He's talking about from the transportation tax. As far as the law enforcement sales tax, they took over our animal control.
That's what's producing the money that's available for roads.
For roads, yes. So in return for the law enforcement sales tax, they took over the animal control for the city at no cost to us, then?
Correct.
Alright.
So they have the equipment and the vehicles and typically we'll respond if we have some animal call in the city.
It's going to save a lot of money.
Work session?
We'll have a work session, I'm going to wait until John Mooney can be back.
Okay.
Which, and Donny, it's not going to be the next meeting, it'll probably be the one John says he's going to miss three meetings, so we need to bring him up to speed on the roads too, so we can do that.
So then you're certainly talking about...
Well, then, well, you'll miss the May. There's no way you'll get it on by the certification date of May.
That's right. Well, I mean, and that's really a practical decision, when you're talking about what was kind of, unless you want to have enough time to get the...
And I think it's, you know, complicated enough issue, you don't want to just...
Rush it.
Rush it.
Got you.
No, we don't want to do that.
You've got to structure those things so they're...
How? We can't kick our feet on it either. We can't kick our feet on it either, we got to get going.
I agree with you, but you know, we got to do it right.
Is there model policies on those or examples that we could go by as far as some of these other propositions that have passed recently that would expedite that procedure?
The city of Eastboro, we represent just a law enforcement sales guy, so we can certainly look at what they did and see if that's what it comes to.
And any possibility of a work session on an off night of the meeting that maybe these gentlemen could make it? Again, I don't want to rush it either, I don't want to jump into something, but if it's something that could be drafted easily and relatively cost effectively, it would be nice to look at that.
So how are we compensating for two officers down? Overtime?
Overtime, I'm working a couple evenings next week, I know Jason works some evenings here and there, just covering it. We still have one officer out on light duty after a surgery, non-work related, so we're covering, everybody does a good job, everybody pulls their weight and just tightens the belt a little bit and gets it done temporarily, like I said, it's something I wouldn't want to do forever, but, you know, we have a dedicated staff and they do a good job for us, so.
I just think it needs to become a priority if it's addressed before we're down to four or five officers.
Yeah.
Because it seems like we've had more turnover.
You know, we look at that, you know, the sheriff's department pays significantly more than I do, but they have turnover too, I mean, it's just, some of it is the nature of the bee, some of it is salary, some of it is just lack of things to do sometimes, you know, I mean, there's certainly things to do here if you want to do it and it's a double-edged sword for us, you know, I think because we do a pretty decent job, we have a pretty low crime rate, but because we have a low crime rate, it makes it harder to attract young kids out of the academy that are full of spit and vinegar, so.
They don't like the quiet.
I'm sorry?
They don't like the quiet.
Yeah, we don't use the Q word though, it's reasonable. Alright, anything else? Thank you, guys.
Thanks, chief.
Sandra? I just want to think about that, you know, there's other dates, get your calendar out when the season is open, and it'll have to be on Thursday night, you got to be mindful of the meeting, you know.
Avoid two days.
And avoid twos next.
Just give all season.
Sounds like T-Bill. Where are we going?
Good evening. Hi, you have my report in front of you. I want to point out just a couple of things and I wanted to share with you some coverage that St. Genevieve has been getting recently, which I touch on the report, but it's always interesting, I think, to see it. So this is a publication called West News that covers St. Louis metro area, everything west of 270, so Baldwin, Chesterfield, St. Albans, that area, and not only are we on the cover with the very handsome Green Tree Tavern building, they did a story that's a full spread and we did this little ad right over here, so I can pass that around to you. And then we also did some paid inclusion in the South County Times and the Webster-Kirkwood Times about, especially about our special events that are coming up, so everything from this weekend with the Coldiseldot History Conference, the Master Gardeners Garden Walk is the key event in May and then the French Festival in June, and it says St. Genevieve shines during special events, so this went out to that whole section of St. Louis that is inside 270 and that are frequent travelers here. So if you want, I will pass these around and you can look at them. And as, thank you, as Alderman Jokers pointed out, we were also on MSN Online's list for, they had a slideshow of 40 places across the United States that are great to visit and underrated, so definitely small places that were great to visit and underrated, so that was kind of cool. I had several people actually call me because they saw that online.
My daughter, who's shooting, yeah, didn't want to call me up and tell me that.
That's great.
Yeah, it was.
Thank you, I just appreciate that, it's good to know people are out there pulling for us. So on the NPS update, we've provided all the information to the Missouri Legislature and the committees for the process with the state DNR to be able to convey the properties that the National Park Service is most interested in to establish the footprint of the park and just so that you have some figures in your head, that footprint that was recommended in the NPS report is about 12 and a half acres of our total 4,600 acres that are in the National Historic Landmark District for St. Genevieve, so just so that you have that figure in your head, just good to know.
People really get confused with that one.
Oh, my goodness.
Yes, they do, it's easy to get confused, that's why I thought you might appreciate having that number readily to mind.
People, for whatever reason, they're coming in taking the whole town, you know, and I've had to explain that so many times.
Yeah, 12 acres of primarily areas where the state already owns it now, anyway. So on Monday of this week, the mayor, Martin and I, attended the ribbon cutting for the Center for French Colonial Life. This will begin their official hours of operation this coming up weekend and if you are familiar with on Market Street where we had the old... And if you are familiar with on Market Street, where we had the old Bank of St. Jen building that's been vacant these many, many years, now that is full of life, being the Center for French Colonial Life. So that's exciting, and that certainly will expand our tourism offering, as well as, as you know, the museum, the St. Genevieve History Museum that's going to expand and relocate across the Courthouse Square. Friday night, tomorrow night, is the Fourth Friday Art Walk for the month of April, and this weekend is the Echol de Soldat. So they will be setting up tomorrow down near the Moses Austin House and the Jardinet Campground. This is an event that is co-hosted by the City of St. Genevieve, and they come here every year and they, you know, eat in our restaurants and visit our shops and come to the Welcome Center to have speakers. The speakers on Saturday morning are free, and we have a list of those down at the Welcome Center if you're interested in historical topics, you would find it very interesting, or if you have any children that would be interested, they're more than welcome, too. So that's my report. Oh, and on your consent agenda tonight, you have a resolution for us to reply, to apply for a tourism grant from the state's Marketing Matching Grant Program. It's the MMG program. We apply for this every year, and so appreciate your support there. Any questions?
I have a comment.
Yes.
It's not on Sam or Sandra's benefit, but I was at that Transportation Advisory Council meeting, I sat across the table from Greg Beavers. He's the city administrator for Farmington. Some of you, Bob shaking his head. Greg's a smart guy, who's an experienced city administrator. You'd have to know him. He's the most even tempered person you'd ever want to meet. I mean, it's hard to get him to smile, but he asked about the National Park Service, and I told him, and he just like started beaming. And he said, "I like St. Genevieve. You know how big that is? You know how..." And then he stopped and he come back 10 minutes later and said, "Really? This is a big deal."
It really is. It's going to help our community.
It's the media coverage that we're getting. We're actually meeting tomorrow with a reporter from the Post-Dispatch, so.
This will help. It's going to help this city tremendously.
Yeah.
So is this learning center. It's going to, it's going to help this city. It's going to really do that. And there's a lot of work to be done, you know. There's a lot of work now, chasing this and keeping it out front and pushing, you know, the government and what we need to make that happen, so.
Is this difficult as far as your group coming in every year? This is more than normal.
This is a few more. We have been reaching out because they're changing curriculum. It was all fourth graders for the most part. Now it's third and fourth. We had also reached out to a number of private schools around the area, and we're getting a few tours, so.
Sorry.
One day, we had three tours in one day. And this morning, I had two tours, and my front desk person called in sick, so I'm like trying to get my job done and handle the fourth graders, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, thanks for noticing. That's why I thought you would just appreciate seeing that.
Oh, yeah.
Just to know what's going on out there.
Yeah, it is neat.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Steve Wilson.
Evening, everyone.
Evening, sir.
You see my report?
Down at the wastewater plant, the north rotor bearing failed the other day, well, last month. And we were, from the rotor project last year, we were able to save one of the bearings off that unit that was fairly, fairly new. And so we had that sitting there. We did all the work in-house. Typically, that project would have cost about $9,000, and we did it with materials that we had saved on hand. Budget didn't take a hit on that one. Thanks. Escated computer at the water plant. It's, water plant's not the best environment for electronics. Computers typically last a couple of years. That one's starting to show signs of corrosion on the inside. Once it starts on the computers, it's irreversible. So I look forward to bidding out a new computer year before long. Speaking of bids, we have a, we have on the agenda tonight, a truck for the water plant. The vehicle we're using now, or was using, is a '93 Dodge Dakota. We don't need a new truck out there, so I asked for a used truck and budgeted for it. We'd have a bid of $10,000 on that tonight, so. The truck doesn't get used as much as the other ones, but it's still needed. Also on here, I have a crane system for the water treatment plant. All the pumps and motors in the water plant are put into a lower level with no access. Typically, you have to bring the backhoe in the building and raise them up. Can be very dangerous doing it that way.
Yeah.
This is also a budgeted item. Any questions?
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to appoint, we have to, I understand every two years, we have to appoint our city clerk, so.
It requires a motion.
A motion?
Second.
More period of two years.
Yeah.
Period of 22 years.
22 years.
Definitely.
All in favor?
Aye.
Same way with our chief of police?
Thank you.
I make a motion to appoint the chief for another two years.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Now we have to, election of president of the board.
We all just keep staring at each other.
We need a motion. We need a, somebody, you've got to...
Somebody nominates somebody.
Somebody's got to nominate.
I make a motion to nominate Joe Prince as president of the board.
You sure?
Yes. You deserve that.
No, I'm joking. I have a second.
I asked for additional nominees.
Any additional nominees?
Okay, now I vote. Very none.
Very none. So we have a first and a second, and all in favor of having Joe as our president of the board?
Aye.
Did we have one?
Who said, who may, who would like to second that?
It's actually, I have one nomination, so approved by affirmation.
Right, there you go.
Thank you.
Well, you were last time, right?
Great committee reports.
Yeah, we got a little bit from the St. Jen TV. We got a young man that's willing to serve on our board, and we didn't have time because the meeting was Tuesday. We get it on this agenda, so we're hoping to have it on next. It's Bryant Wolpin.
Oh, okay.
And he's been attending the last couple of meetings. He's an energetic young man.
And he's still willing to serve.
Yeah, yeah. Even after some of the stuff we had the other night. But anyway, yeah, he's kind of excited about coming on board.
Yeah, I spoke to him. He had nothing but good things to say about the job that the board's doing and everything Don's done down there, and he was really impressed with it, so.
Yeah, Don's taken him through and showed his stuff, and he's impressed with it, as you said, yeah. So that'll be at our next meeting, right, Mary?
Yes, you have to, yeah, we'll, we'll need to get Pam all the information she needs. Any other reports?
We had a meeting on the 17th of April with the Tourism Advisory, and Sandra kept us hopping, and there's a lot of good stuff going on there. I think that's really impressive, well-prepared, and I'm really looking forward to working on that board. There's a lot of irons in the fire, so thank you very much. I had the privilege of going to that park board that we're, that meeting we're talking about, and it was on fire. They were like, it's a half hour. Hour and a half later, we left the meeting, but there's a lot of good things going on there, too, so I'm looking forward to working on that board as well. So more to come on that.
Yeah, good deal.
That's what we need, a little enthusiasm, and you know, it always comes down to money, but there's, there are ways out there we can do things. There are simple things that we can do, and it's, just got to keep doing that, so.
It's good stuff.
Good deal.
All right. Martin, you have anything for planning and zoning or the areas? Very good. All right, public comments. We have anybody in the audience that wants to speak to the board? Uh, Chip, go ahead. Come on up here.
Come on up, please. Just stay here. Well, I've been talking with Martin and, oh, I'm sorry. Name I'm in trouble. This is, I'm Chip Marzuko, owner and operator of good old Marzuko Electric, and I'm here with two of my three kids, and Leroy Willett. Andy, want to hand those out real quick, if you don't mind? What I'm here to do is, I'm actually just here to give you some information about what we're going to do on June 2nd, because what we've been doing the last seven to eight years has expanded pretty drastically.
Thank you.
And I want to make sure that you guys know what's going to happen on June 2nd, so that if you get a phone call or something, that all of them are know what's happening around town. I don't know if everybody knows that we've been doing this fundraiser to raise money for our special needs and for Down syndrome for, like I said, last eight years. Last year, we were lucky enough to bring in over $24,000 that one day, so it was a tremendous success. And actually, this year, it's already started out to be tremendous, because my daughter that's not here is actually on, what do you want to call it, the Junior Rotary Club, and they put on a fundraiser and raised over $4,000 already for the event.
It's interact.
So, yeah, there you go, the interact. So it was really neat, because they took it on themselves to bring it up and get it going. But what I wanted to do is kind of go through what we've got here. The front is pretty well the standard that we've been doing. I've kind of threw in some raffle tickets if you guys want them. You can definitely purchase them. Tuesday night of next week, the Audubon is very nice to put on a meal setup that they put out 10% of everything that, you know, food and drinks, so if you guys could come for that, that would be great. The Pedal and Play, that's one of the things that we're going to, I was wanting to let you guys know about, because we're divvying it up a little bit different. We definitely have the bicycle ride like we've done in the past. It's a family fun ride that goes up towards the baseball park, and then we've got a 10 mile, a 25, and a 50. But we've got another item, and it's called Triumph Bikes. I don't know if you've ever seen them. I know the community center had three of them out there at the Glow Run. It's actually ideal for special needs. It's like a glorified stroller, but large with bicycle tires and stuff. I think we got nine participants, so what we're going to be doing is going from the KC Hall up to the city park there by the baseball fields and back, and that all starts between 9:00 and about noon. So you're going to be seeing a lot of different things going on around the streets between 9:00 and noon on that part of it. The tractor club, like they've been doing in years past, they do have a parade slant poker run, so you'll see antique tractors going through town. So if anybody brings that up, you know, neighbors or something seeing all this stuff going on, so the alderman knows that, hey, we've got it approved and everything's going, going to be going that way. There, it is open for cars. There will be maybe stock cars and a bunch of other thing going on that parade. We do have something new, and Leroy was nice enough to ramrod this. It's a UTV ride. It does start from the KC Hall, and it does go through part of St. Jen, then it goes out throughout the county and then comes back in to St. Jen to the KC Hall. So don't know what kind of reaction we've got on it, if it's going to be 10 or 10,000, but hopefully we'll have a good amount of people to participate, because we've got a lot of out of town people that's coming in for that event. That's kind of a unique thing that everybody's interested in and doing a lot of. We did talk to Martin and Eric about how we're going to run that, and everybody that's got a UTV that's participating in it is actually going to be having a bright yellow plastic tie on the front bumper, so that if you guys see people out there riding around that does not have this on there, that you'll know that they're not participating in our event, because we don't want Tom, Dick, and Harry out there doing what they're not supposed to be doing. And we've got, I think, a good crew of, I know the county approved everything and the city approved everything, so it should be real good on that end.
They are requiring insurance. The same thing we require license.
Yeah, on the very back page, it does spell out all the requirements. So hopefully, I mean, we've got it set up real well. And it's, one of the things, and Leroy's done a tremendous, tremendous job on this, because it does have a poker run, but you know, oddly enough, with all the different religions and the different type of situations you got out there, it's a poker run, but not actually playing with poker cards. It's actually, each stop's got a different, if you want to call it a game.
A task.
A task to do. So like, the first one's going to be up at the River Landing, and it's basically pulling, well, I'm sorry, the first one's at the KC Hall.
Yeah, it's darts.
Darts.
And then the second one's a bag of chips. They put their hands in a bag, pull out a chip, whatever number on it, that's how many points they get. And the third one's a spinning wheel. They spin for points. No game one, you know, so.
And we do have a tremendous amount of prizes for the different things you can win with highest poker, lower poker hand, then there's attendance prizes for all the people that attend also, so.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay.
Got a question over here.
Sure.
One of the viewers at this event would like to support your program and purchase a ticket. Where would they go?
For what part of what event?
Drawn.
On that, you can actually, I've got some here with me today, if you want to.
That's fine, but what about the people who are looking at the...
Okay, you can actually, right now, they're being sold at our office at Marzuko Electric, I think, two times at Overly Meets, two Saturdays. Then there's Save-A-Lot on the 18th, and Country Mart on the 23rd. The day of the event, we'll have them being sold. We, last year, we had over 84 silent auction items that ranged from wine baskets to beds, bed mattresses, what do you want to call it, like kids' blankets on carpets, you know, like the kids' carpets. Then we had over 24 oral auction items, which was, some of them was, oh, coolers. One was, oh, a table for on the back patio with an umbrella with bar chairs and stuff around it. This year already, the Remax Store in Perryville already offered up a seven day vacation that's going to be offered for the oral auction. So it does have a lot of neat things. I mean, last year, Eric and his group, the band played that evening. This year, it's Alan Hook and them's going to be playing after the oral auction. So, I mean, it starts, we get down there 5:30, 6:00, the bike ride starts at 9:00. Then we've got all the different runners, and then we got the, oh, the UTV ride, it's sign in from 10:00 to noon. And then this year, it's going to be something neat also. I mean, we got to put a lot of faith and a lot of good help this year, because we got Tina Ringwall and her daughter Tammy, and we're actually going to be, and I was hoping we'd have some flowers, and we didn't have it taken care of, because we just found out this past Monday night, is we're bringing Disney to St. Jen. When I say that, we got four Disney characters that's going to be out down there throughout today. We got Mickey Mouse, we've got Elsa, what's the dog? Marshall, I'm sorry, and then there's Spider-Man that's going to be there throughout today. And of course, we got good old Mississippi Lime sponsor or mascot, he's going to be there, and then we got Smokey the Bear. I mean, the county jumps in, and if you ever have any children at all, and we do it with special needs especially, is they got the fingerprinting and videotaping. It's ideal. I mean, my son is a good advocate of what, he talks to anybody and would go with anybody, and with this type of avenue, you'll have a track record of how and what they are, and we do it every, like, every two years, so you got a track record of it, so you've got that. We do have a petting zoo, we got bounce houses, we got, I mean, the day goes on and on and on with a lot of really, really neat things. So, I mean, please pass the word around. Please come down to the Audubon. Next, that's the first that we have ever tried that portion. I think it's going to work out really well. Other questions?
So I just want to make sure I understand this clearly. So if I go down to the Audubon's Tuesday, May 1st for dinner, whatever I eat and drink, 10% of it be?
Between 4:00 and 8:00 o'clock, I'm sorry. Between 4:00 and 8:00, I'm sorry. Yeah, between 4:00 and 8:00, anybody that comes in, all the food and drink that's purchased during that period of time, 10% of it's gonna go back to our special needs.
That's fantastic.
They've been doing that with a lot of, that's two hours longer than they gave over two. They're doing that, they've been doing, that's awesome.
It is.
They didn't do that with a lot of...
That night will be another good night. We're gonna be selling raffle tickets and we do have 50/50 that night and we're gonna start giving, we're trying to get our list of raffle items out there. I know the lumberyard does a tremendous job. Thank you guys for, I know that the gifts that they have always given us and it's always a large enough item that always goes on the oral auction, so we appreciate that. We do have the cruise-in part of it. It's something that, we open it up for anybody and everybody and when I say the cruise-in, it's not, there's not a fly on here, 'cause our, our pile of papers would be about an inch thick if we would put everything in there, but Chris Kurtz is bringing a bunch of his Army paraphernalia. We've got, I think, eight or nine stock cars that's gonna be down there, already spoken that they're gonna be down there. We've got a handful of cars from different car shows and different car clubs that's bringing them in. The city does a tremendous job helping out along with the fire department, the ambulances. I mean, we just keep going on and on and on. It's a tremendous thing and we appreciate what the city does, that's for sure.
Dry weather's always appreciated, too.
That's for sure. That was, last year was the first year we've had no rain, so that could be part of the fact that we actually made a good little home. And what's neat about it is, and I know that when I first started this out, and I'm sorry for talking for so long here, but it's, it comes from heart here, but when Andrew was born, of course, he has Down Syndrome. We started off and it was all the money was going to fund Down Syndrome. We started, I started getting more involved with our special needs in St. Genevieve and that's whenever we built the, the baseball field and now we got the playground. And what we do, if you, if you're a person that has Down Syndrome or wanna give for Down Syndrome, the checks are made out to the St. List Association for Downs and it goes to that. Like the, the Junior Rotary Club, they actually put, part of theirs is going to Down Syndrome and the other part goes to our Challenger Sports Program. When I say that, that goes into our fund, which is the Senate Bill 40 Committee that I'm on the board of, and we've got it there and that's how we made the golf field. That's how you just, those new coverings that goes over the bleachers and the backstop, that's some of the money that went to that, along with the playground. We're keeping that up and we've got actually some other things. So, this past year, over 16,000 stayed in our community, then the other six and stuff went to St. List. So, that's one thing that's, I think, helping out is the community seeing how much we're giving to the community and it's helping out a bunch. And we've got a ton of people that's just amazed what we have in our community for special needs, so it's great.
The Interact Club is high school kids that the Rotary Club sponsors for this, helps organize and support, but not financially. We do things to raise money for them, but it's not, they're not part of the Rotary Club. They're on their own and they chose Down Syndrome as their, their project and they do things to raise money and, and, and they just take it all. It's been amazing.
It, it really shocked me, 'cause the president of the Rotary got ahold of me, well, I was talking to him and a couple of things and he goes, "You know what your daughter's been doing?" I said, "Oh, gosh." "What, is she in trouble?" And he goes, "In trouble? No. She's the vice president of the Junior Rotary." And I said, "Oh, really?" I said, "She never really talked that much about it." I said, "What they doing?" And she goes, "They wanted to bring up something to raise money for and she brought up the fact of, let's bring up Down Syndrome awareness." And of course, the 21st is Down Syndrome Awareness Day and on that day, they had a dress down for St. Jen Valley. There was eight businesses in town that participated. They did some SOC Days, some PJ Days, all kinds of different things. They sold Down Syndrome bracelets and one company actually was nice enough to, I think, match some funds that they came up with, so it totally floored me whenever they said that they had over 4,000 something dollars that, you know, that this group of great young kids is doing, so I applaud them tremendously. That was great.
Awesome.
Yeah, it is. So, please pass the word around. Please come on out. And if you see a lot of activities going on, don't, you can call Mr. Bennett, but don't, don't say we're doing anything bad, hopefully, 'cause hopefully, we're not. All right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Do I have an opportunity to look at the consent agenda? Do approval. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Takes us to old business. Bill number 4213, an ordinance approving a proposal from Adventure Engineering for the purchase of a submersible wastewater pump in an amount not to exceed $8,750. Motion to approve. Second. We'll need a roll call.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rosika?
Yes.
Six yes, zero no's, two absent. Bill number 4213 now becomes ordinance 4146.
Thank you. Bill number 4214, an ordinance approving a bid proposal from Axon Enterprise Incorporated for the purchase of five tasers in an amount not to exceed $7,433, amending the general fund budget, number 10. Police number 16.
Motion to approve.
Second. We'd like to have a roll call.
Alderman Rosika?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Six yes, zero no's, two absent. Bill number 4214 now becomes ordinance 4147.
Okay, bill number 4215, an ordinance approving a bid proposal from Turnkey Mobile Incorporated for the purchase of Tubomobile Data Terminals, the amount not to exceed 7,600.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All need a roll call?
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rosika?
Yes.
Six yes, zero no's, two absent. Bill number 4215 now becomes ordinance 4148.
Thank you very much. Takes us into new business. Bill number 4217, an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri to establish a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interests for certain officials. Do approval.
How's this different than any other?
It's just a statutory requirement.
So, we have to just do it?
You gotta do it every two years.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that takes us to bill number 4218, an ordinance amending the City of St. Genevieve Personnel Manual Section, Leave and Holiday, subsection 601 Holidays is set forth below. Do approval. And how does this differ from what we had?
Takes it from the...
Well, he came in on the...
The mayor came in.
The mayor came in on the half-day holiday that we, that we had.
Good Friday, that was.
Good Friday.